Okay, at 7 o'clock, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectment for February 11th, 2019, to order. Role call: Catherine Tendrich.
Virginia Sanviator.
Madeline Prisiblo.
Becky Hewitt.
Item number three is to approve the meeting minutes from January 14th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve this written.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried to approve the meeting minutes from January 14th, 2019. Item number four is new business. And item one is executive session personnel matters, possible action. So at this time, I hereby move that the Board enter into executive session to discuss personnel matter. I also move that the Town Chief of Police be invited into executive session.
I'll make a motion that we move into executive session on a personnel matter with possible action with the Chief of Police present. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried to go into executive session and move that this Board enter into session to discuss personnel matter. Also to move that the Town Chief of Police is invited into executive session. So we will come out of executive session at 7:16 PM.
So I'd like to make a motion that... I hereby move that the Board of Selectmen approve the proposed release agreement between the Town and Kenneth Davidson and that the first selectman be authorized to execute the release agreement on behalf of the Town of Plainfield. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried to move that the Board of Selectmen approve the proposed release agreement between the Town and Kenneth Davidson and that the first selectman be authorized to execute the release agreement on behalf of the Town of Plainfield. Item number two is discussion regarding the Board of Education's request to use special education funds to offset additional special ed expenditures, $350,000. So tonight, our superintendent, Ken, if you'd like to come up to the table, you're more than welcome to come up to the table.
Good evening.
We are here to explain the situation with that. And tonight, this is just discussion, this is not to vote on it.
Do you want me to do a quick walkthrough or do you already have questions?
A walkthrough would help.
Okay. So because of the variability of the amount of kids who can come in to a district within a given year, the state set up the Special Education Excess Fund, which is determined by the amount that a district find that it's paying in a given year. And when you get a student in, one student, where the cost of that student exceeds four and a half times the tuition, the average cost per student, they will pay the excess of that amount. So we have some students who were placed for $107,000 in an outplacement because that's their need and that's the best placement. Since our rate is under $15,000, any that over $75,000 will be returned to us. That excess cost is provided to the district and each year, we identify how much monies we believe that we will get because of the number of children. This year, we projected that we would get about $700,000 in special ed excess aid grant from the state for the amount of children that we serve. We have placements of approximately 36 students, 38 students, for a total of $2.29 million for just those placements. That's a lot of money and we cannot meet their needs in our district, it's not possible. So we learned also last year that the state is dispersing their monies and that we are getting $700,000 from the state for the special ed excess for charges that are being incurred specifically in excess of what they think is reasonable. Now, let me just tell you one other qualifier. If a student comes to us from DCF and they are awarded DCF, then the state reimburses us 100% of the cost over one tuition. So if we have an $80,000 placement and our tuition is about $15,000, they will actually give us the $65,000 for that child because it's a child that they placed in our district, but it's not a person who pays taxes for our district. So the state gives you a higher recovery. Last year, if you remember, the governor was talking about taking all that special ed excess and putting it into your ECS, he was going to collapse it. Part of the reason was it was some research that not every district applies all of that special ed excess aid to the cost because it's given to the municipality. And I gave you a record that just kind of showed you that the law that guides it is the General Statute 1076G. And basically, what it says is each year, the state, based on the numbers that we send them for the costs that we are incurring, they provide the treasurer of our municipality with a grant, and that grant's called a special ed XSE. And if it turns out that during the year, there are unanticipated costs, increased costs that we could not project, then the school department's obligation is to inform the town that there are costs far in excess of what we planned for. And then the monies that are given to you as a grant can be applied, and this is important, as an offset. The power of that is if you decide to use some of that money to offset this expenditure that nobody planned for, it doesn't raise our appropriation, it doesn't raise our MBR, the minimum budget requirement. Your budget is $36 million, that's it. If they gave, if we needed $200,000, you don't get $36,300,000 because that would mean next year, you're starting with a higher balance. This keeps your appropriation. You don't need to have, as far as I understand, that you don't have to ask for a tax increase, you don't have to go to the voters because then no money will come to us. All it does is goes as a grain. Now, we have some of those, right? Now, we have the E-rate that comes in because of money that we get because of the electricity we use, and that money is an offset. When we budget for technology, we subtract the $45,000. We subtract Medicaid that comes in. So we use a number of grants as a cost offset. In this case, I sent you on the front, look at the children who have come to us, and I gave you the dates when they came in. On August 23rd, we had a $76,799 placement. September 4th, an $85,000. On October 1st, a $52,000. And it goes right down. You can see that these are the costs of new children who were, who came in since August. We did our budget and we got approved by July first. And since August, $583,000 of new costs. This doesn't include two students that we placed from our program into $100,000.
So these were all of your enrollment?
These are all, these are their enrollment date, right? This is the date they came in. The evidence is that there's certainly much more cost than the $350,000. But here's what, as a school district, we know and we believe is important. So this $700,000 that will come into the district as special ed excess. But it is our obligation as a district to try to offset these costs every way we can, and we do that. Like, there could be a student who moves out with the district. And we had one student who moved to Killenly. So that student, not in this one, that, because they were not new to us, that was a student who preexisted. And so that's a reduction. And then there are things that we do that we find that we can save money. Or a teacher who might have retired or left mid-year. We had a few teachers who took maternity leaves and they took child rearing, which means they will replace 60,000, 70,000, a teacher was replaced by a 40,000, and you save money. So we went through our listing of all the new accrued costs, $583,000, and basically said, how much of this can we offset just by cost savings? And we also wanted to show good faith that if we, whatever money we don't use goes into the town treasury anyways. So like last year, you know that we have a $693,000 cut from the state that none of you do. And we appreciate all the support we got from the town because we found a way to make those cuts. We lost a lot of programs. At the end of that year though, and I think you can check the record, we also received $700,000 in special ed excess. But we didn't ask for any of that money because we tried, we were under a tight budget and we made that work. So that money just goes back into the fund balance. And at the end of the year, you were fortunate enough to actually put $500,000 to your, in the fund balance. The concern that we have is we now have an unanticipated set of tuitions, which would force us to have to reduce more programs again this year. We've already lost the CNA program, we've lost, you know, some of the technology. We've increased class sizes where we had to because we made those cuts. And this year alone, the state aid still never came back to what it was a year ago. We're still $200,000 short of what we used to get back in 2017. It's 2019, we're still $200,000 short. We've cut our budget, we've done everything asked of us, we've balanced our budget. And in the last eight years, other than the year we had a DACCO bill, we've always given money back to turn money back to the town. It was one year, and I know we've given back more than $200,000. In this year, we find that there are these placements who came in clearly documented. None of them would have been known to us because they all came in after the year started. And even though the cost is $583,000, we know that we have and we will offset as much of that as we can. Our request is that at the end of February, there will be a dispersment from the state to Plainfield. And it will be for the first part, 75% of $700,000. And the regulation is, once it is known, it says, "A portion of the grant or all of the grant which relates to special education expenditures which is incurred in excess of such Town's Board of Education budgeted estimate of such expenditures shall be used as a reduction in expenditures by crediting such expenditure count rather than as town revenue." So when you get the $700,000, part of it, only the part that we can justify, can be used if the town approves that to reduce that cost. So if you do agree, and I know you're not voting tonight, we're trying to just give you the idea of what happens. If you do agree, it will never come as a cash to us. What it will do is you will see the tuitions, and that money will just be applied from the grant account towards that, and that cost will go down, releasing that money for us to be paying the other bills that we have. So it's no new money added, no money that adds to the appropriation. All it does is offset the cost of something in special ed that's back to me. And that will be directly applied to tuition, that's where the money will go. I think there's merit in the fact that when you use the special education funds that way, you actually can keep the reduction of the school's budget at an appropriation level lower because it doesn't become a tax burden, it's an offset. And so we actually believe that there is some merit in looking at it this way. And we wanted to be fair and say that rather than ask for a number that we can qualify here and at the end can be back $200,000, we think that the town also wants to be conservative and keep as much in the reserves because all of that money helps to offset the school budget. I mean, the bills are paid by the budget, by your fund balance, you pay it. And then as revenues come in, it replaces that. So we just felt the fairest way is to make sure that we weren't asking for more than half, number one, because we think we can balance the budget. And number two, we wanted to make sure that you realize that we're trying to be as conservative as possible in using monies that are designed to pay this kind of specific. In eight years, this has only happened once before, that was five years ago. I don't know how many years you were on the budget board, was it five years?
I was on board for five years.
So you're on board. And we had a $250,000 excess that was coming to us. And when I went to the then-selecting folks suite and I said, "Could we access? I'm here only two years, I don't know why these costs are so high." And he said, "Well, we'll go for a referendum," which was the only way we knew how to do it then, and so we did it that way. I didn't realize, and I don't think the first one realized, that raised our MBR then because it added $250,000. So now you're starting for the next year was $250,000 that you're obligated to contribute. We now learn we don't have to do that. You virtually just apply the cost to the qualified expenses and it must be for special ed. You can't use it for anything else except that. So it's kind of a quick understanding of the fact. I'm concerned that the governor a year ago, that the then-governor, thought that he could collapse it into ECS. And I am concerned that there has been some question of whether they would eliminate the special ed excess because a number of districts don't show it as a cost offset and it basically goes in to the municipal side. And if they were to ever lose this, this is a great resource to the town. I mean, it's good money. We used to get $450,000, I can show you, we qualify, every year we get. We brought that up to $700,000 just by better defining every cost related. Not only is it the cost for the company that we, or the agency we go to, we charge the bus transport for those, the para that is assigned to that, the OT and PT services that we provide. Every dollar spent on a student who has those needs is now qualified. So we've learned to escalate from a $450,000 a year. Our highest was $932,000. Our average now is between $700 and $740,000.
Now, has our general enrollment gone down?
Yes.
It has. You mentioned increasing class sizes, but if the enrollment goes down, is that to our advantage budget-wise?
It did help us. Last year, we released three teachers because we took our enrollments in some of our older classes. We tried to keep the younger ones, about the 18 to 20 group. But when we got into the fourth and fifth, we brought them from 18 up to 23 in a class. It seems like that's not a lot because we grew up in, we were in classes of 25, 30. But we do know the challenges are a little bit more difficult. So where the enrollment is reduced, we have increased. For next year, when you see our budget and we have that first draft, we're reducing two teachers at the high school because our freshman class is only 130 students where our typical high school classes are 170, 160 to 170. So we had 40 children going to Ellis, you know, that's a lot of, they're looking at careers and we know, right? And the interests are of that. So when you ask, does lowering enrollment lower costs? The answer is, it does lower the cost, we can then apply it. If 20 kids left across four districts, five students, you would see no difference. Because we went from about 160 down to 130, 30 children take math, English, science, social studies, you're at least losing one section. And if you do that two years in a row and you have 132 classes, 60, that's basically a teacher that you can use. So in the two core subjects of math and ELA, we believe that we'll be able to meet all of the students' needs in their courses. But we only have like three world language teachers, four, so we don't have any. We only have two business teachers, that you wouldn't see for a long time. Science is pretty tight with the amount of teachers. So it is realized in the elementary grades where you can just make classes lower. At the high school, you have to actually have a content area that reduces them.
You have to offer that.
You do have to offer, especially in some of the advanced course, courses that we offer. It's surprising to see special education rising when your over enrollment. We went from 12.3% four years ago in special ed, we're up to 14%.
But yet the general enrollment is way down.
Not way down, but down by 100. I can tell you, you know, one thing that is not there, but this is very quick, just because you asked. This is impressive and we're going to put this up on the district website so people can see it. People wonder about Plainfield. This is from the state, by the way. This is the state's record of our, look at the per pupil expenditures and look at the set of names down from the top. We are virtually the lowest cost per student in the state of Connecticut for our region. We're at 14, 649. And this is from the state records, this comes off of the state's CSBE's report. People say, can you do even more, can you even economize more? It's going to be higher than we already, we are the lowest, which is impressive. I mean, that's a good thing. But if you look right next to it, you'll see that in 2018, we actually dropped to $14,000, 410. And that's because we took the $700,000 cut from the state. And then you can see that as you go down, some of the highest costs at $25,000. When you have a very, very small district like a Chaplain, there's only 148 students in the whole district, but they need all the same nurses and librarians, and so they're $22,000. We're the right-sized district, we have 2,300 students, we use our money wisely. We are at 14,000. If you want to see something that's a little bit interesting, look at Sterling. And you should be happy not, don't be frustrated enough, but look at Sterling. Sterling is a little higher than us, they're 15, 293, right? And we're at 14, 410. So they come to our high school, they're actually getting a good deal because they're paying more. They're a K-8 district, right? But think about it, if we didn't have those 100 children, 120 children from Sterling, they contribute to us, they help us offer the programs, we have our marching band, we have things. If we didn't have those extra 100 students, we'd have less teachers, less choice. So it's a benefit on both sides. They pay our tuition, they don't pay more. But they're actually getting a good deal because they're a $15,000 district coming to a quality school. And I actually have this same data, I've done it now for the state. I actually show where we are on our performance across the state. We're in the average of everyone, we were at one point, we were challenged. Where we are in special ed. And then on our poverty, we are basically the eighth poorest in this region. We're at 49, we're up to 54% poverty. We're at 49% poverty this year. And yet we're the lowest cost per student in the state, with the exception of Woodstock, the district, but they're only a K-8, not a K-12. So I just want you to be at least proud of the fact that I think you're showing that we're being good stewards of the finances we have. All of these factors, you are the low-cost district, we are trying to save money, we have this unprecedented increase. I'm 45 years in the business, I've never seen a half million dollars come in in one year. I've not seen it, and I've never asked for this, just because this is an amazing, unique year. The state should fix this personally. If the state had the money for all the child, I love Killenly, if Killenly sent us two students that weren't on their roster in September, why wouldn't it just keep them on your roster? And you already got them budgeted. We pick them up, they drop $100,000, we pick up $100,000. We use our XSE, they have XSE money. It seems like for the year that the child comes in, if the state could think about it, just have that money stay with that district and then we'll pick it up the next year when we can budget for it. But right now, these children all came to us from other districts. And they're new, they're surprising. Well, not all of them, there are about six of them that we didn't know about. They had a PPT, they had a new plan that wrote that said they needed a placement.
Now, we don't need to take any action on this.
At this point, you do not.
Because it goes to the Board of Finance.
But only when the Board of Selectmen, you don't have, had a chance to deal with.
Right.
Because...
No, I'm not happy that you brought it to the board.
Right, right, right. I mean, if you felt that you had a challenge or did not, then you would provide that advice as well. You're right, we do need to go to the Board of Finance because we want to present the same information and see if they, you know, if they support it. As an educator and as a superintendent, question, worry about money? It sounds logical to me, it may not sound logical to everybody, but we don't get a penny more on the budget, we don't get a penny in appropriation. Virtually, it just pays down costs that we didn't plan for or expect. And the law is designed to actually protect you. And the reason why we appreciate the Board of Selectmen bringing this to you early is because when the money is awarded at the end of February, within 30 days, the municipality has to apply that. And we want to clearly say, we don't want it all applied. We don't think we'll need it and we think it's fairly even on the side of the town. We just want to make sure that in 30 days, we both fulfill our obligation, if it is an obligation.
One quick question I have for you, Ken. Because of the increase of students that we're getting, and I know we call them special needs, a lot of that, is it more not-so-much special needs? Is it more behavioral issues, but they're put into that category of special needs because some of those students cannot be handled in the classroom?
So the highest costs are truly developmental challenges. Like, the highest cost we have of students are age 18, but we only limit to age 21. There's no place at the high school, they're not behavior issues because they're in a self-contained classroom. But we cannot meet all of it. Very, very complicated in terms of they could need diastat support, they could have seizures, they could have also medical, whatever. A lot of the higher costs are really related to some various medically challenged or there are some significant drugs in order for their behavior and their ability to function. But there is, you're absolutely correct, that there is an increasing number of children. They are special needs, but they are in the behavior disorder realm.
And they're given a psychological diagnosis.
And they are given that, and it has to be completely qualified psychologically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally, and academically. It has to affect them in all ways. We do have, this year, we started a program, Catapult, which we call Hyroads, well, we actually call it Pathways, as multiple ways that we want children to succeed. So we took back eight children who were placed in $70,000 programs. So that's $560,000. But we only paid $384,000 for them to do it on our campus. So we saved money by doing the program on campus. What happens is, we did save some money, some of those children left, so we have a number of kids in it, we have, we still have about nine, six of them were placed in other, we've saved. But not enough to stop this because not every child, when you build a program, you have to build it either for academic need or it could be behaviorally. This is really the higher need we saw, which was really that socially, behaviorally, their challenge to be successful in school. They represent either a concern for themselves or others. So we created that program and it's a measure of success. We're hopeful that next year, to make this work for us. We're going to move that target from grade 9, 12 to 7, 10. And the reason is, 7 and 8 grades are easier to deal with in behavior. You don't need to have career experiences to this by. We give it to them, but not on-site. So by adding seven and eight to the mix, we could add about four more children, again, at $60,000. So it could bring another quarter of $1,000. And we actually factored in an additional reduction to our special ed cost based on trying to bring it up a little different target. But she's that very right that we are finding more and more students that we need to support in schools. Big challenge.
But not coming in here just for special services from another town.
That's correct. If they do come to us from another town, we actually charge them tuition. So for example, Sterling sends us about four to eight children and instead of paying $14,000, they pay $45,000 to $65,000 because of having a campus and extra support. So we do have some tuition then that we can handle, especially in the higher grades, 9 to 12. But if any child comes to us because we have a good program, that's a full charge tuition. All the other children are a child.
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you for hearing.
Item number five is correspondence. There's no other correspondence. Item six is other, and we have no other. Item number seven is adjournment. But before we adjourn, I just want to say, I see your signs. This is something that we are just trying to see. And one of the things that I have done is gone back and looked at your videos. And one of the things I noticed on the videos is that a lot of times in public comment, we have questions that cannot be answered. So what I would like to try for a period of time and see if it's more beneficial is that email your questions, call, or my doors are always open, and see if some of the questions that follow this, especially like discussions like tonight, we could go on for hours with questions. And if Ken was not here, I wouldn't be able to answer some of those questions because I am not superintendent, I don't know all those numbers and where they come from. So I appreciate your public comment and all of that. It's an experiment, we're trying to see how we can better improve our meeting and we'll see how that works, okay? So at this time, we would need a motion to adjourn.
Hey, Saz, how are you going to make that to the public so they're aware of that ahead of time, ask you questions?
So one of the things that I'm starting is a selectmen's newsletter, which will be on Facebook and also it will be on our webpage. So all that information... So all that information will be out there. It's just a better way to try and communicate and get the accurate answers out there and make sure that the information that's going out there is the correct information that's going out. So at this time, a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried to adjourn the February eleventh regular meeting of Board of Selectmen at seven thirteen PM.